I'll call this meeting to order. We'll begin with the Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the vision of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have quite a full agenda tonight. We have a number of appointments. The Airport Commission representatives are here. I handed out what our policy is for appointments, just so you understand what our definitions are and our limits. It is the practice of the Select Board to reserve the appointments part of its agenda for the purpose of official reports. No public comment except as noted below shall be taken during this period. Official reports are defined as reports from any elected or appointed town board, commission, committee, or department head. If said report is from a board, commission, or committee, the report must be one that represents the majority of the body, not that solely of the person, individual making the report. So in making your report tonight, I'm assuming it's on your budget, you're representing the commission's consensus as to what your budget's looking like for next year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And you're first on the agenda, so why don't you give us your presentation?
Stand up there.
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. So, the Airport Commission has a budget that's put forth pursuant to the intramunicipal agreement. We had a public budget during last week. We only had two people up here for that, but this is the budget that the Airport has, the commission has decided upon for next year. What I did is the proposed amounts and then the expenditures as of this year. And I do have to make a caveat to that expense, it says through October. A couple of those numbers are not completely through the month of October because we've not received a not electric bill for the month of October. I can't speak as to why, but I speak with the electric company that that clarified. So, as you can see, as of October, the Airport expended seventy-three thousand dollars. That number is off. There were a couple of things that were still outstanding at that point. It really should be more about seventy-seven thousand dollars for a year at that point. So, next year, what we're looking for is a total budget of eighty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Factoring out our revenues and incomes, the total amount of town appropriations for the five-member towns, what we're asking for is twenty thousand five hundred, twenty thousand fifty dollars. And the amount per town is a portion pursuant to the intramunicipal agreement, and it's done on a pro-rata basis for per capita. So, the amount that the Airport Commission is seeking from the town of Littleton is eight thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars, which is slightly up from last year, but not significantly up from last year. I can go through the individual numbers, and I can say that specifically with respect to the one, there are a couple of numbers that are really best estimates, mostly because we have no way of controlling them, in particular plowing. The plowing and the fuel, the tractor fuel, both of those numbers are approximated based upon a formula we went through the last several years of snowfall, and unfortunately, you know, we can't predict the weather. So, that number could be in flux. I will say that we are pretty much operating very much on a shoestring budget. We have taken a number of things in-house for the commission, which is made up of a group of volunteers. I'm on the board through the town of Whitefield Select Board. Mr. Ashes, who's present with me, as well as the Whitefield representative, your representative James Mason is here. Dave Presby is the Sugar Hill representative. Jay McCuster, who's the town of Dalton, also Dalton's Lockman, he's the representative for Dalton. And John Ogle, who's from the town of Lancaster. And then we have two other members who are just commissioners at large. So, we've taken a number of things in-house to try to save some money, to not burden the towns. For example, one of the things you'll see is zeroed out is the accounting fees. I also have last year's, the way the budgets have been done in the past weren't really budgets, unfortunately. The former commission submitted profit and loss sheets, so if you'd liked last year's profit and loss, I'm happy to give that to you. But I can say that in the last three years, about four thousand dollars was spent on accounting fees. So, we've taken that in-house, so we're not asking the towns to contribute to that any longer. So, essentially, we're looking to kind of keep the budget status quo. Last year's budget was actually three thousand dollars higher than this.
Okay, that was one of my questions. The other question is, is he on before the Budget Committee yet?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night?
Tomorrow, we're scheduled for that. Because the way the IMA works, we have to go through our own process through the commission. It's all set up through the intramunicipal agreement, so we're a little bit late in that for everybody's town budget, unfortunately, but that was something that all the towns signed off on. So, we're actually, we're actually kind of a little ahead of schedule because we're not supposed to have our budget done until the 131st. But we're trying to accommodate everybody's request to have budgeting information prior to.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Why is the IMA limited to those five towns and not some of the other towns? Or is that, am I going way, way back in history?
You're kind of going way back in history. The IMA was re-adopted in 2010, and it was just a number of towns who joined. I will say that back in 2010, the town of Franconia ratified the agreement, as well as the town of Jefferson. Jefferson withdrew from the agreement two years ago, two years ago, and Franconia has not upheld the terms of the agreement. So, the commission actually voted them out this year because they had not paid their member share for a period of a couple of years. And without making the payments, they don't, part of the agreement allows you to have a seat on the commission to dictate how money is spent and make decisions, and if you're not contributing to it, you don't really have a right to do that. I can say that moving forward, one of the things that the commission is looking to do is to go back to some of the towns that had been members in the past. I found a bunch of records from twenty-five-plus years ago, that at one point in time, there were twenty-two member towns to the airport.
Yeah, that was true.
Yeah, it was, it was a lot. It went all the way down to like Woodstock, Lincoln. And that's something that we're going to work on, you know, sort of rejuvenating. I know one of the issues that the town of Jefferson had had in the past was with the budget process, that essentially, they were like, you're not projecting forward, you're just looking at the past.
Yeah.
So, we are revamping that. And again, the commission this year is, other than Mr. Mason, who I think had gotten there shortly before me, at the tail end of last year, so we have a much more dynamic group who's interested in making the airport something that is, you know, contributing to the economy of all of the towns.
You know, questions come up, and it doesn't seem like they're followed up. Like, one of our questions last year is why aren't, just the same question, why aren't more towns participating? Why aren't the hotels participating? Why aren't some of the major users up there participating more than they do today?
Okay, well, again, I wish I could answer some of those questions. I can say we're working on that. I mean, that's probably the song that you heard before.
Yes, we have.
And I understand that, but unfortunately, again, I've been on the commission since April, as, and most of the commissioning has existed since May. And, you know, we have spent this year sort of, you know, getting the house in order and getting everything under control again, because there were certainly things that were not being handled appropriately. And we've started a marketing campaign, and if you noticed in the budget, we have not put any monies into the budget for marketing. We're going to be raising those funds independently, and that started this year. So, Rome isn't built in a day. Everybody who's on the commission, with the exception of one gentleman, have full-time jobs. And, you know, we don't have funding to actually pay somebody to do this stuff. So, you've got a group of eight volunteers who are working, you know, really hard to try to make this thing work. You know, Mr. Presby, who couldn't be here tonight because he's out of state, certainly is, you know, has been somebody who has invested in making the airport grow and making it more user-friendly to everyone. And I think you folks probably know, we did do a fly-in this year in the fall and opened it up to the communities as well. So, we had about seven hundred people in attendance.
He has his own hangar, doesn't he?
He actually owns two hangars there, and he certainly pays rent, and he actually is a major contributor. And again, the contribution number is a little bit off. We received another contribution. I think he donated about thirty-five hundred dollars this year to the airport in addition to the land leases that he pays to the commission.
Okay.
So, and with respect to the hotel, like, the hotels, Mount Washington probably is where the biggest number of people, if you want to say, to one specific entity that people go to. And one of the things that I just think that everybody needs to keep in mind is they did make a donation this year. And the other thing is that they are a major employer in the North Country at this point. They have about seven hundred employees. A large portion of their management staff live in the town of Littleton. So, I think that that's something that you should keep in mind when we talk about the contributors, because they're creating job opportunities for people to be able to pay their taxes and buy homes and use all the services in all of the towns. And most of those people also all do their shopping here, as well as keeping, having the guests come to the town of Littleton, use the restaurants. You know, probably the biggest source of car rental right now is Enterprise Rental Car, which is based in Littleton. So, there is a derivative economic benefit to all of the towns in addition to the direct payments to the airport.
Any other questions?
It comes out to like a buck forty-nine per capita.
Buck forty-seven.
Buck forty-seven.
Well, as according to the census, I think, in 2015 numbers. So, yes, it's a dollar forty-seven per head for the town of Littleton.
So, what do we do last year? Six thousand, wasn't it?
I know what the, what the share was.
Six.
And unfortunately, like, and this is an issue for the, for the commission and for the airport in general, is that the contributions from the member towns is supposed to be set by the intramunicipal agreement that was ratified by all the towns. So, we would ask the towns to uphold the agreement that they entered into. I mean, if you have questions about our budget, want to pick up our budget and say we're spending too much, that's, that's a different issue. But I think it's problematic for the towns to just say, we're going to pay what we want to pay as opposed to what the agreement they entered into, you know. I mean, this was adopted by the town, and with all due respect to the board, and I understand that times are hard. But the airport, you know, we have certain obligations through the FAA that we have to comply with. We have to keep the runways going, we have to keep the lights on. And we're trying to do that as economically, conservatively as possible.
Can we make this same presentation tomorrow night to the Budget Committee?
Yes.
Basically, okay. As a board, we took the position that we would not render decisions on any part of our budget until we heard from the Budget Committee, so.
That's, I'm not asking for a decision tonight.
Well, I understand.
We were asked to present, and I just wanted to make sure that people were, you know, with full understanding of what is happening at the airport, as well as, you know, again, we're stuck with the IMA as well. And I know, just for, I've heard some rumblings about why isn't Whitefield paying more. Under the intramunicipal agreement, again, that is set by the agreement. I can say that Whitefield has always paid more than what is under the IMA. Last year, Whitefield paid nine thousand dollars, even though the member share was only thirty-four hundred. The other thing to keep in mind is Whitefield also pays all the sponsor share money for the capital improvements, which, you know, there's kind of a fine line between improvements and maintenance and operational costs. Like, one of the things that really is an operational cost is to keep the runway safe. And that always gets put into the capital improvement program. So, I can say next year, Whitefield's portion of that is going to be over fourteen thousand dollars on top of their IMA share. So, you know, I know that this question's about, well, Whitefield gets money in tax revenue, that's about sixteen thousand dollars a year. So, typically, the town of Whitefield pays more than that. And I can also say that this budget, one of the reasons it's as low as it is, is because the town of Whitefield, the Public Works Department, is contributing significantly to keeping things running out there.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Chief Smith, you are number two on the agenda here. Highway Safety Committee, School Street. And you also have one right after that.
Good job.
Parking meters.
So, I'm here this evening because I was, I received comments from the school safety, the High School Safety Committee on one of the earlier snowstorms that we received in town, and then had received comment from Public Works, as well as Fire Department on the issue concerning School Street. So, I felt based on those comments that the committee should meet. So, the problem is parking on School Street specifically, from about the rear entrance of Parker's Marketplace to the large parking lot, it's, more and more parking is extended up the road towards High Street. As a result, when plow trucks are going up the hill and school buses are coming down the hill, certainly during, or specifically during climate weather, is a real issue as to who can stop and who can go where. So, due to that safety concern, that was brought up initially by the school, but certainly those comments were passed along in public works. And the Fire Department has an issue getting up the street. There's a lot of, because there are more vehicles parked on the street, certainly in the winter when the road width goes dramatically smaller because of snowbanks, even though our Public Works Department does an outstanding job removing snowbanks as quickly as possible. We've had some issues with vehicles losing mirrors and so close calls. I don't have crashed at it. There isn't, there haven't been any serious motor vehicle accidents as a result of this, but that's what we're trying to do, is to prevent that from happening. So, the committee met last week, and what the committee recommended was to eliminate parking. Nobody parks on the, I guess it would be the eastern side of the road anyhow on School Street between Main Street and High, High Street. So, we asked for signage and for the board to make that official, no parking this side of the street. And then on the opposite side of the street, which would be the west side of the street, we are asking that parking be restricted from the parking lot to the rear of Parker's Marketplace to High Street during the winter parking ban months, which would be November to April, Monday through Friday from six AM to four PM. They picked that time because that's when the school's in session, and as you can see with this photo, although it doesn't depict the parking that usually goes all the way up High Street during the day. There's only a few vehicles parked when that photo was taken. It's extremely problematic. Also, members of the committee, myself included, met with several individuals, business owners, the church, in the immediate area where, of the area that would be affected, and they were, they all agreed that it was a good move for safety and that they supported the request. So, here today is a member of the Highway Safety Committee asking that the board restrict parking permanently on the east side of the street from, between Main Street and High Street and Monday, during the winter parking ban months, which is November through April, Monday through Friday from six AM till four PM on the west side of the street between the Parker's Marketplace parking lot and High Street.
So, what are you going to put up the signs and take them down in the spring?
I believe, I, we haven't, we haven't talked about signing yet, but we could, we could either do that, or we could just have the wording that would state that it's only during those months, like we do on all the roads leading into Littleton, there are signs that state when our winter parking ban is, with yellow or orange signs.
So, if you do that, what are the repercussions? And there's a lot of cars parked there. Where are they going to go?
They would get tickets. I don't have an answer as far as where those.
And you've got no parking here, you've got no parking at Bailey Lake?
We've talked to, we've talked to the church. They've agreed to park elsewhere. I know that one of the major contributors to the parking were the, was the church, as well as Horizon Engineering. Pub Works Director spoke with Horizons. They have alternative parking on Clay Street. And, so they're going to, they most likely would move to that lot if they have a large crowd. And I'm currently working with some of the employees over at Parker's to find alternative parking.
So, that's where most of them come from, the employees that the?
No, most of them come from the church and from Horizons.
Yeah. Isn't there a parking lot behind the Horizons building?
There is.
Smaller.
There are current, I believe Joe could comment on that, but I believe that they own a lot directly behind the building.
Is it, is it a large enough to accommodate the cars that are now parked on the street?
I believe it is.
Yeah, it's, it's on Clay Street. I continue as with the Northway, the Northway Bank, the parking lots, the Northway has, one bank parking lot, with the drive-through window was the second parking lot. The third parking lot that was maintained for years is not clogged now. That surprises, lot is a probably twenty-powers, a twenty-two pound lot. It's not utilized. They used to use that lot. They used to plow that lot as a path. It's a shorter, shorter walk through that path to the back door of Horizon than it is from utilizing School Street, so I don't know why they stopped using that. So, there is an empty lot that's paved and they lit on Clay Street that awaits Horizons. There's a fourth lot up further, closer to the high school, uh, to the church. It's not in quite a good condition. It's not utilized either. But this one is, this one's ready to go, striped and lit, empty, completely empty today.
And when did Northway Bank come back to town?
I'm sorry, I threw out the name, but what's the name of the bank? It changed.
Union Bank.
Union Bank.
So, the, in speaking with the owner of Bailey Lake, Stacy Northbrook, she's in complete support of this move, and I'll work with her. Says about five employees, different places that we could potentially put them. The concern, obviously, is that when those employees get out of work, some of them have their quote-unquote tip money with them, and we don't want to put them at risk and make them walk all the way to behind Union Bank.
So, say on Horizons and the church and Bailey Lake are all supportive?
Yes.
They all support?
Yes.
Today must have been an interesting day around nine o'clock coming down that hill, because that, you're right, that hill is, or that, the parking on, on that street is, makes it difficult to easily get past the cars. And if there's a car coming up, I guess the rule is, if they're all on one side, then you wait for that car to go up and then you come out, but that doesn't necessarily happen a lot. But this morning was quite slippery, and that would have just added another problem, or another issue.
That's correct.
What's your timeframe? I'll continue.
Oh, I'm glad that you asked that question. So, we'd like to initiate this after the holiday. Sometime between the week of January twen-, uh, December twenty-sixth and the beginning of the year.
Okay. We are, we can wait on this until later in the meeting to either vote on it or hold it off. Okay. There may be other public comments that'll come in. You want to take your, your second item there?
Second item, second item's kind of preemptive, because usually this time of year, we, we receive a request from the chamber, or the chamber comes forward to you, or somebody from the Main Street community asking that we bag meters, at least for the week prior to Christmas. Nobody's made any comment. I know it's going to come up, so it's, it's always been very beneficial for our downtown community to bag those meters to, just to give them free, free parking. So, what I'm proposing is from December nineteenth to January third, because always, there's always shopping that occurs post-holiday, when people want to go down and spend their gift certificates, for, that we suspend the meters during that time period. And we've got those bags, as you can see, I brought one with me, that are a little bit, that look better, a little bit more festive than just putting shopping bags over the meters during this time of the season. But that's what my request is.
Okay. We'll hold these two items for our open session, in case there's anyone here that would like to comment on either one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last appointment is an appointment to the Library Board of Trustees. Joe Evans, are you here?
Yes.
This we can make a motion on to approve, unless you're objecting to this. You're not objecting to it, okay. I've moved the appointment.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor indicate in the affirmative.
Aye.
Aye. Joe, I'll swear you in right now.
Okay.
What's the reason right here? Let's see. I, Joseph Evans.
I, Joseph Evans.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
Perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
As Littleton Library Board of Trustees.
Littleton Library Board of Trustees.
Of Littleton, New Hampshire.
Of Littleton, New Hampshire.
Until Town Meeting Day, March two thousand seventeen.
Until Town Meeting Day, March two thousand seventeen.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable, excuse me, agreeable to the rules and regulations of this constitution.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations of this constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Town Managers Report. We have two items, wastewater treatment plant and maintenance contract request for proposal.
So, earlier this year, the board directed me to put the wastewater treatment plant operations out to bid. Actually, you get, you get one of each of these.
Oh.
And we went through the process and had a site visit, and mandatory site visit, and we've gotten back our proposal, and we see this bid, which will be, we've had, we've reviewed it and gone through and found that it meets all the required specifications of the request for proposal. And would, you know, announce that Utility Partners is once again going to be our operator at the plant. And as part of the discussion on it, just to kind of educate the voters and so that we all can kind of understand what they do, we just have a few slides and then a little presentation that they can walk us through.
You want to sit over here or stand over there?
Yes, you want to come on up and just... The treatment plant is a major asset in the community that probably most people never think about. There's a lot of money invested there and a lot of time and effort that goes into keeping the system functioning. And it's a, it's integrated throughout the community and a major piece of daily life and economic development, so.
Hey, good evening. My, my name's Dave Circle. I'm with Utility Partners. And Andrew came down to the plant, took a tour a while back, and took some pictures, and provided them to me and our staff to go through them and kind of look at them and possibly label them and do a small presentation. So, I put together like fourteen slides real fast. Just kind of wanted to show you how the process starts, finishes, and how it ends up. So, with that being said, I just want to show you a couple of the quick, quick slides that we did. I don't know how you did it. Did you just, did you do?
I just took the photos from the, from the, that I had, probably not in the right order.
Okay. This here, these two here are the, are the centrifuges, which are the, it takes the sludge from about a two percent solids and increases it to about eighteen percent. This way, when we dispose of it and get rid of it, we're not paying for a lot of water to get rid of. We're trying to make it as thick as possible. So, that's what this piece of equipment does. This, this was bought about two thousand six. It was replaced by an old belt press that was originally put in. So, this is kind of the top-of-the-nice equipment. The, this over here is the control panel for that unit. So, that's, this kind of is our ons, offs. Run this pump, run that pump, stop this one, start that one. This here is what the, is the polymer system that is part of the centrifuge. So, it, we add polymer to it to make it, have the water drop out a little bit faster and, and less time. This is the sludge container that the sludge goes into, and this gets hauled off. At the present time, we're doing about one load a week, which is about, is about approximately eighteen to twenty tons of sludge that gets hauled off to RMI, which at that time, they compost it and use it for beneficial reuse. This here's a picture of our lab. At the plant there, we do all of our process control, some of our permit compliance testing and so forth. We just, we send out very little bit of testing. Our staff actually does ninety percent of the required testing that needs to be done. The far picture is just a picture of some flow meters. Naturally, as per the EPA and the state government, is what we require. Naturally, uh, as per the EPA and the state government, is what we require to measure the flow coming in, the flow going out. We have a discharge permit that we only can receive and discharge so much flow, uh, to the Amunusic River. This picture here is, is the sludge thickening tank. What the sludge thickening tank does is it takes it from our clarifiers, um, and then, which is, is approximately seven, uh, about point seven percent concentration, puts it in this tank. Again, it just kind of thickens it up again. It's another, uh, it's a sludge thickening tank. So we put it in here about point seven, take it out of there about two percent. And that feeds the centrifuge. Uh, the next two pictures are, um, the air, air scrubbers, which, um, it takes the, um, the, the foul air from where the centrifuge and the, the headwater area is and brings it through this and, and runs it and supposed to scour it and make it smell better. This picture here is, is a, is the picture of, these are the screw pumps. This is the lowest spot of the plant. So actually, what these do is, is, uh, just actually lift the sewage up to a highest point. This then becomes the highest point of the plant. And then from there, everything else is gravity. This here is the clarifiers. For winter time, we close the windows to keep, try to keep the heat in it from, to prevent it from freezing. And what this actually is doing is just taking the mixed liquor, which is this stuff here, the brown stuff, and putting it into this clarifier to slow the flow down, to separate the solids and the clear liquid. Because we want to discharge just the clear liquid and not the, uh, not the solids. This here is a picture of the UV. We use, uh, ultraviolet for disinfection at the plant. We use, uh, no chlorine. We do have chlorine on site for emergency standby, only if these, this system goes down. This is the, uh, channel for, um, the F one. At this point here, again, we, we record the flow so we know the flow that's leaving the plant. Uh, the far one corner, the far picture over there is, uh, an air blower for that sludge thickening tank. Because we aerate it, shut the air off on our timers, on a cycle, so it runs a little bit, shuts off, runs a little bit, shuts off, and then we decant some of the water off there to just keep the solids in. This here is the, um, our septic receiving site. Our septic receiving site's been very busy lately, um, the last few years. The plant has received over a million gallons of septic the last few years, um, which is beneficial to the taxpayers of the, of the town. Because what happens is anybody who brings septic gent, any haulers who bring septic gent to the plant, depending on where it comes from, if it comes in, from inside the city limits, it get, uh, it gets charged at six cents a gallon. If it's outside the city limits and they discharge it there, it's twelve cents a gallon. The, um, so like I said, we've been bringing in a million gallons, over a million gallons, uh, the last two years, uh, last year and this year so far. And this year, we still got, we still have another month ago. So, um, what we've done this year is we, we actually are in the process of installing it now, is a flow measuring device for the septic. Um, we also run the St. James, St. Johnsberry project. We put the same system in up in St. Johnsberry. The same amount of haulers that the, the hauler said were, they were bringing in, the gallons actually went up about twenty to twenty-five percent more. Because now you're actually measuring it, not taking somebody to work for that, well, I only brought in five hundred gallons when in reality, they might've brought in six to seven hundred gallons. So now you get to bill them for the, the seven hundred gallons. So it'll, it'll benefit the town by having that system in. And we're right at the end of our season now. Uh, we won't get very much septic from now until probably March. So after March, we'll start using that system and really starting to get a precise gallons on, on the, uh, what the haulers actually bring in and get a better billing system for them. That's a quick, quick go-through of the plant. I'll answer any questions anybody has.
Dave, tell us, uh, give us a situation or describe a situation where there is spillage into the river that's accidental and what your reporting responsibilities are.
Um, our reporting responsibility is, is after, as soon as we have a spillage, we're to notify the state within, uh, twenty-four hours. And then we have to, uh, do a report. Then we also have to notify, um, downstream users, uh, within twenty miles, yeah? Within a twenty-mile downstream, which consists of Lisbon and, uh, that's the only one.
Woodsville.
And Woodsville, I'm sorry. So we notify them that we had a, a violation or a spill of, of whatever it was. And then, uh, we, we do a corrective action, write, report to state and also EPA and do numerous testing to make sure that the, the problem has been corrected.
What are some of the conditions that create that, that issue? I know it doesn't happen often, but I, I know you.
Yeah, that's why I'm stumbling, because I, it doesn't happen that often, but it could happen, um, equipment malfunction, um, operator error. But mainly, it, it, it's contributed to, uh, e- equipment failure usually is what happens. And what we try to do is we try to have redundancy of, of different equipment. And, um, so, so we try to have waste pumps. We have two waste pumps. We have three return pumps. We try to have multiple ones. We actually keep up on the equipment. Uh, our staff, which is a staff of three, maintain the equipment very well. Um, the town has been very good at providing, uh, we provide a, um, a capital improvement item, our, a list every year for a five-year plan. And, um, the town has been very good at funding that. And if you, anybody ever wants to come down to the plant and take a tour, we invite them to come down and see what your money's providing and, and, and what it looks like.
I have to say, five years ago, I took that tour. Uh, I was worried about what I was going to be exposed to, and it was a great tour for an hour. I didn't dilly-dally, I left as soon as I were finished, but it was a good tour, very educational, and, um, it was a pleasant experience. Given what we're talking about, it was a pleasant, pleasant.
So when was the last time you had spillage?
Couple of years, a couple of years ago, there was one.
Yeah, I, I.
Fred was still there.
And what happened? What, what was the cause?
I, I spilled a few years ago when Fred was there.
Was it a stormwater situation?
Oh, that's right. It was a stormwater situation where, um...
It's only been one, two days and twenty years of equipment failure, but all the rest have been storm-related.
Right. That's, that's true.
And, and the, and the town has been very good at separating, um, the, the storm system from the sewer system. And that's helped tremendously is, uh, because what would happen is anytime we had a rain event, you could watch the flow at, at the treatment plant just go spike real high. And then that was usually what the cause was. And then there's certain operational things that we can do at the plant, uh, to try to prevent any flows. And that's usually what we do is we go into op, uh, a storm mode flow, try to hold all this, everything in the plant and then do the best we can and, and we've been fortunate.
We're continuing to work on improvements for the stormwater infiltration now. And, um, Woodard and Kern, I think, had done a study years ago, and, um, there, there wasn't action on it. And we've taken that back up and working closely with Utility Partners and, uh...
And a big part was when we did, when the town did Main Street, uh, upgrade also. That took out a lot of, because what happened is, is with the old, in the old days, they used to put the rain drain, the rain, uh, gutters into the sewer.
Right.
And, uh, that's, that's a known one now.
Eddie?
Yes, my name is Eddie Moore. Uh, what I'd like to do is commend David and his crew on the, uh, operation of the plant. I used to be a critic of the place many years ago, and, uh, they do a wonderful job at the operating the place. I don't say nothing, they're not even going near the place anymore. I don't have any need to. But I also, uh, I have several books at home, uh, three binder books, and I'm going to put them all together and I'm going to bring them down and you can have them.
Okay.
But they date back many years from the beginning of the plant all the way up as far as, up to the latest, as far as I know, and, and I'd get rid of them. Like a lot of things, I got to get rid of them. I don't want to hold them, save all that stuff anymore.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Joe?
Dave, what do you, uh, sometimes we talk in this, uh, forum here about, uh, expanding the, uh, Elstro Park. I know you and I talked briefly about, uh, capacities right now. If you want to share some of that information, uh, what, what capacity we're at now, what we could, what we could take in the future.
What, what's our flow now, man?
Um, we're six hundred thousand. Like I was talking before, I guess before you told, before I was talking, we can give them a number of forty percent, but it depends on what we're talking about this weekend.
Yeah. It, the plant is designed for one point five, I'm sorry. The plant's designed for one point five MGD. The present flow right now is about six hundred fifty thousand gallons a day, domestic waste. Okay? One thing to remember is there's, there's different wastes. There's either, there's, you, these categories are categorized in either domestic waste or industrial waste. Industrial waste has a high strength. And I say a high strength, that's BOD and TSS. So the plant is designed for a certain, um, a number, pounds of BOD and TSS. So if you bring in domestic waste, you can bring in a whole lot more domestic waste than you can industrial waste. When you start bringing in industrial waste and developing your, your industrial park, it starts to knock, knock out a lot of your, your BOD and TSS that you're allowed to bring into the plant and treat safely to meet your purgament. Because we all, we have, we have a discharge permit that's required by the state EPA. Once you hit eighty-five percent of that permit, then you have to submit a, a plan to the state and EPA on what you're going to do to do an upgrade at the facility. So once we get, we start doing the calculations every month, and we try to watch and make sure that we don't get too close to that, that eighty-five percent, to where then we have to do a, a plan to the state and say, okay, you're going to upgrade the facility or you're going to, you're going to have to spend millions of dollars to upgrade the facility, or you're going to have to go through your collection system to try to take some of the water out. And there's different things that they look at is they look at flow and then the pounds of BOD and TSS. So it's a, it's a fine balancing act that every town has to, any town and every city has to do. So you have to kind of watch when you, when you bring in an industrial, um, especially ones that discharge high BOD and high TSS, because what ends up happening is, is then you, you use your capacity at the plant. What some people do is if, if industrials are starting to discharge high BODs and high TSS, they put a surcharge on them to take, to buy capacity at the plant. And say, okay, if you want to come and discharge this high BOD and TSS, we'd be more than glad to let you discharge it, but it's going to cost you X dollars to, to buy the capacity at the plant. Because at some point, the town has to do an upgrade at the facility, and that gives them a capital reserve account to do that.
Bruce?
Do you provide a bond in the event, if people make an error and it flows down the river?
Yes, we have an insurance bond.
And how much is it for?
Uh, I don't, I think it's two million. I...
Uh, the fines are astronomical or levy when they seem to occur. That's the reason why I'm asking out of it.
Right.
Doesn't mean that you've got to be proven that they caused the problem, although it would be a flexible.
That's right.
That's, that's the only thing. The, uh, the slugs that you take out, are you taking care of it? Do we pay any of the slug?
Um, because what happens is, is in our contract, we pay for the chemicals to process that sludge. We pay for the power and the labor, um, to process it, make it thick. We put it into that container that I showed you that was on the, on the screen, and then the town pays for, has a contract with RMI to dispose of it.
The reason why I'm asking is, one of the other town managers had a deal, and he was running it through one of his companies, and our costs went from eighty thousand a year to a hundred and twenty thousand bucks a year to get rid of this thing. So I'd like to know, what are we paying to get rid of this stuff?
Our, our contract that, or I say ours, because I, I consider us as part of the town.
Yep.
Is the contract that we just, we, we just negotiated with RMI, um, I don't know the ton, the tonnage per cau, the cost per ton, but it was cheaper than what we previously were paying.
And we put that out to bid so we could get a real market, uh, open market. Uh, I'd, I'd have to look at, I'll have that number with me, but we had a decrease from shifting from, uh, we were using, uh, Casella.
Casella.
And now, and going to RMI. And it's also helped create efficiencies for Utility Partners because we.
Most of that was back, back when we were on T M.
That was with, uh, Casella.
They dumped it out and then all the vacuum, so it's, uh, something else.
I think Casella's was going to landfill and this is being reused.
At one time, Casella was, how long ago, to Canada.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The other one I got for a question though is, what rating are you making the water, dumping it back into the Amunusic River?
Oh, our, our water is, if you, you, you would need to come down with a class to look at it, it's very, very clear. Our TSS are less than two. Our BODs are less than five.
The Amunusic River is rated as a Class B river.
That's right.
And a problem that we've been having in the town of Ullton is we've been making Class A water. And Class A water is a lot more expensive to produce out of the thing on it. So if you could petition the government of whatever it is, go back and try to say, why are we making Class A river water? The town would save a lot of money on the thing on it. So if you could go with that flow and it's got to come through your office to try to petition for it, if you, it says it's a Class B river out of the thing on it, there's no reason. When you dump, fish can't live in Class A river water.
It's too clean.
It's too clean on the thing on it. And they, if you look at, where we live in the headwaters, uh, I think if you might be able to get it, and if you get it going back, you'll be, uh, it might, might save the community, might save a lot of money as a result of it.
Is, is the A water a result of the process that they put it through?
Yeah, it, it was, we didn't have it in the beginning, as I reckon. I think it was produced and then when they applied to put a new roof on the building and stuff like this, and then suddenly the government wanted to make Class A water out of the thing.
Okay, so it came as a regulation?
Yeah, it was like a regulation, that they were saying everybody had to do it.
Part of the discharge.
At the present time, it's affecting the fishing down through the, your Aspire's Echoes, because they can't limit. There's no fish from, from, I'd say, from where they're dumping it in, all the way down through until you get down to Poulson or something like that, so absolutely none because of the amount of water that's going in in Class A water.
Let's tell you something. If you want to come down, that there's fish, I, I understand what you're saying, but there's fish right there at the alcohol, if you, if you want to come down.
Yeah, I think there's some, but comparatively, there's not much of, from that end.
Well, that's a good point, Bruce.
But, uh, we could, we could save a lot of money if we could in turn get back to asking to get Class B.
The problem is, we never will, is because of what happened is, is in the old days, and I say the old days, it's previous, you had primary treatment, which was a very low process treatment. They've come out with new requirements. At, at that time, that met what the EPA and the state wanted the town to be. What's happened is, is the, the permit requirements have gotten more stringent. So now what's happened is, is our permit now, we have to meet a thirty-thirty. Before, it used to be a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty. So they've made us clean the water up that goes into the water. And so that's, when you talk about the roof being put on, that's when it was the old primary plant. Now it got upgraded in nineteen eighty-nine, I believe it was?
That's when they had to put in the nine percent also.
Correct.
Because they weren't being tried for all.
Correct.
And that's, that was a refined. The other one that I'd like to do is, I would like to have somebody research it, one of these colleagues, you could start to produce hydrogen with the discharge and the water that's coming out of the place on it. And our towns could run all their trucks and stuff like that on hydrogen. And it's a feasible way of doing it with the amount of water you've got that's coming out of there, dumping in that river, to produce hydrogen. And they got it over in New York State. Uh, and they're producing hydrogen with their water out of the thing on it. And as a result of it, you find that you could produce, put your trucks on and you run your trucks on hydrogen out of the thing on it, and consequently, you save a hell of a lot of money, but you've got to push your own. But it's basically, it's a, comes from the discharge of the water that's coming out of the place.
Rudy, did you have a question?
Yes, I, I just want to ask this, uh, maybe. Who's got the obligation, let's just say you find somebody that pollutes the water or stuff like that, whose obligation is to call it up, particularly person, a solicitor or an officer, you pollute the water stuff like that, it's your agency or the cell to me?
The, when you're asking about the pollutants of the water, are you talking about what's coming into the plant?[1774.82]
Yeah, what's coming in.
Is what we would do is-
Before you call Concorde?
Yeah, yeah. Because what we do is, we work with Joe and others, and try to find out where the problem is coming from. And we go out and do an industrial inspection, and find out what's causing it. Because there's certain constituents and stuff that they have to meet by the sewer ordinance that the town has. To enforce the sewer ordinance, that is the town's responsibility, to enforce the sewer ordinance. But we don't have the authorization to do that.
You're not having an obligation?
No, it's not an obligation, don't have the authorization to do that.
You're not having an authorization?
Because we're not town employees.
You call that particular person, I'm needing, I tell that particular person that what he does day in and day out, he pollutes the water.
Well, we try to work with the people to try to say, hey, you know what, you're putting too much grease, or you're putting too much copper. Because copper, copper is our big problem right now, is copper. So we try to work with them and educate them. And then, and then we pass that on to the city administrator and the town administrator.
They have an obligation to call that particular individual?
They have to do whatever they think is the best to resolve the problem.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We had another item here, December twenty-third?
Yes, so, well, December twenty-third, the town office staff would like to use time off to take off the half-day before Christmas. And in doing so, we request that the board approve closing the time offices for that day.
So, instead of being open from eight-thirty to twelve-thirty, they just wouldn't be open?
That's right.
Okay, we'll hold this one through public, through public comments, and then we'll come back to it. The other item here under other businesses, the health officer qualifications requirement. I've put together a, I'm the health officer here in town. I got the idea after I went through the sewage plant, that maybe that was a good thing to try. I've written a job description, and I've asked the selectmen to review it. It's quite extensive. Because I'm talking about this in a public meeting, I'll be happy to give anyone a copy of it. As you know, whatever three selectmen do, goes away as an obligation upon our leaving the office. So there's nothing historically binding about this. What it does do though, is it provides a guideline for someone replacing me. My term's up in two and a half years. And really kind of lays out what the requirements are and the responsibilities of a health officer. As some of you know who have listened to my reports, I have up to forty-some different cases. In fact, a couple of them involve things that are going into the river that belong to the town, downstream from where you are. As well as a lot of investigations of household complaints. Couple weeks ago, when the ninety-nine restaurant had an accidental discharge of its fire suppressant material, I got called. When the house that was making the meth burned up, I got called. But I get a lot of calls, and I get a lot of investigative sort of things. And I get a ton of reports from the state and from the federal government on Zika outbreaks and various kinds of problems. And I'll say very openly, I think the state of New Hampshire's only requirement to be a health officer is that the selectmen approve you. There's no other requirements. So what we're asking for here is, and again, it's just a guideline, is at least a couple of years of college, and a couple of years of past municipal experience. Given the level of readability of the reports that come in, you need a little bit, you don't have it to understand it, but you need a little bit of descriptive statistics. You need a little bit of chemistry, you need a lot of biology in your background. Now, you can pick this up in high school as well. So there's no requirement that you have to have a two-year degree, but the guideline calls for a two-year degree to be considered among applicants who are an associate's degree. And a few years of municipal experience. Again, all of it can be waived. There's no requirement here, this is just a guideline. Also, the town added a number of elements here which I've not encountered yet, which is lifting up to fifty pounds, carrying up to fifty pounds, grasping, handling, a number of things moving of your hands. There's a possibility of that happening, but I haven't had that happen yet. So, this was just a recommendation, a guideline. Yeah, Bruce?
I have a recent experience as one of these health officers. And I don't think if a health officer in the state of New Hampshire can go onto anybody's property without getting a court order from the court, right? Second thing is, if they now have got it on the basis of, there's a new law in effect that's going to work first as to mold and the other people, you can't make good things on those things. You have to hire another person who's qualified, and they have to be licensed to do it in order to be able to do this. Consequently, there's very few people in the state of New Hampshire. I ended up talking with a guy down in Hanover who's qualified. And I found, by looking it up, out of it is, out of it is only fifteen, ten or fifteen of them that I got to you, that write credentials to be able to do it out of the thing on it.
You're right. I mean, it clearly should be required at a different level. But in some cities, you know, they hire full-time health officers who are part of the town municipal.
Health officers have a very, I use the word, ability to be very strong, and should be from a health angle. I think that one of the things is, I think you're also required to inspect all the schools once or twice a year.
Schools and daycare facilities.
Right, yeah.
And I've done a few of those so far. They give you the questions to determine, but-
But it is, you know, it's a serious thing, I think, and very important as to what happens by example in any community. They call, complain, people do. Think you can just automatically take care of it, which is not that way.
Right. So are you fellows okay with this?
Yeah, I would simply add, town manager works with-
With the zoning, oh, okay.
Town manager.
There's one section here that says, "The health officer works with the zoning officer, police chief, fire chief, or highway department manager to resolve intra-departmental public health problems." So we'll add the town manager there as well. Okay. Again, this is a public document, because we're talking about it here. If anybody wants one, just let me know, and I'll give you a copy of it. It's a formatted, you know, relationships, job content, responsibilities, and then skills and abilities and educational requirements, and that's basically it. So, given that, is a motion with one addition?
Yeah.
Check it.
All those in favor indicate in your favor. I'm sorry? I have those-
Rules and regulations and what you're just-
I hold a master's degree in public health. It's forty-four years, I do. But it's forty-four years ago, before we had cars. Okay. So we approve this, right?
No, we didn't.
We're in board? Okay, so all those in favor indicate in your favor. All right, thank you. All right, that's all we have, no old business, no new business. We have public comments. Anyone have public comments? Eddie?
I just want to, I'm a complimenting ideas today, tonight. Joe DePomo has completed the Kern Street Bridge signs on both ends. And I'm very proud of what he's done. He's done a wonderful job in doing it. I just learned about where it was on the south side of the bridge, there about a week ago. And it's about fifty feet from the bridge itself, but he's, he got it planted down there, so when you walk by to the bridge, you're going to see it right there on the south side of the bridge. And he did a wonderful job.
Good.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Joe. Anyone else? Yeah, Rudy?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to update you guys, you know, about the, Mr. Representation of the Taxes, the, you know, property tax that was done about a couple months ago. I've been in contact with some big dues, okay? And they told me all the laws, stuff like that, where I got to go through. Where, then I talked with a couple of friends of mine, and I told them, we can do nothing about. I'll tell you why, maybe you know about, but I'm just going to refresh your memory. I got fifty people that they're going to write a petition to go through again for the assessment that it was done. Then, from there, when I sent the petition in, they're going to, you know, get in contact with the three selectmen. But the three selectmen, according to Mr. Green, I haven't mentioned the name, okay? He said, you know, but the selectmen, probably when they receive a complaint for certain amount of people, you know, about the assessment, they should reconsider, you know, to do something about. Because if I start this procedure right now, you know what I'm going to do? I got to pay normally, all the fifty people that write the petition, we got to pay the company, KRT. KRT. I mean, we don't have sixty-five thousand dollars to be to this guy over here, all right? You know, and unfortunately, that's the laws, right? Correct me if I'm wrong. That's the law, it's like, you know, we tax paid, we got all the, you know, what we can do? Just got to pay, stuff like that. Also, another thing that, you know, maybe it sounds funny, that probably, you know, I picked the people that, maybe I don't like it too much, and stuff like that. More I dig inside the taxes, right? I don't understand the way, you know, Mr. Kelly, he's got a beautiful building, you know, Napa, okay? I don't understand it, for every million dollar he went down, he went down a three hundred, let me see. He went down three hundred forty-seven thousand. I don't see nothing wrong with that building, I drive it back and forth all the time. I mean, you know, it's, that's, I don't pick on nobody, right?
The hospital went down a million six on their assessment. So-
But I'm talking about us, you know what I mean, you know, regular citizens. You know, but anyways, that's the thing, I mean, you know, it's, it seems like that we taxpayers, citizens, a little time, we don't have too much support from, you know, the office over the New Hampshire, right, of the state. And we also don't have the support, you know, from our bosses, I mean, you know, our bosses, our offices.
Rudy, those fifty people, are they primarily people that where their tax assessments went up?
Yes, they all went up, yes.
Did they, did they try individually to apply, to sit down with a representative?
Some, but I mean, you know, it's, I'll be honest with you, a lot of people say, oh, they have that enough. I don't even, you know, I don't want to know, stuff like that. But why my tax day went up to twenty, you know? Two thousand dollars, or three thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, you know? Mine went up a two, but I don't care, you know? But just to say, I mean, you know, it's, that's just a mean, that whatever, whatever as we do, taxpayer, if we try to go, you know, above you guys, what, what, what? We can't do nothing about it, I mean, you know, unless you really want to be, you know, whatever. But it's, that's the thing, we just, we get started with this company, and, you know, they did a lot, a lot of stuff that, you know, it's-
Well, I know you may not remember five years ago, but, or now, six years ago, when the assessments went in the other direction in the dropping market. People were pretty angry. This time, I'm sure there are some people that are not happy, but overall, it was a smoother process. And again, as I think we've said before, it's a science, but it's also an art form, you know? The person doing an individual assessment comes up with a number, and that's his or her number, and that's what we live with.
Like I said, I just want to tell you guys, you know, that, you know, I can't do nothing about it, that's it. That's what it is, and that's what it is.
Thank you, Bruce.
I went to the school budget hearing on it. And I, between the town not meeting with the school, and the school not meeting with the town, sinful, I say that, I use that word, it was not very well done. On your part, and their part. I believe what should be done, not because of who's sitting here or anybody, but I think you should have an article placed on the town that says, and I told the school the same thing, that it's a requirement that they have to meet four times a year. Because you don't want who's ever sitting on any of these boards. And they should have a requirement that says, and should be letting the people make the decision to tell you, we have similar things like the water and light pump cannot increase cost of electricity and water without hearing that was put on by the people. We should be doing the same identical thing, both on the school board and also on the town level. As far as I can saw, it's a requirement that says they have to meet and discuss it, and try to figure out what the ramifications, because this was an expense because they didn't turn some money back. You know, it wasn't coming back from yours, it was theirs, but you also didn't meet. You know, so that's where the sinful part comes in, because you guys didn't do diligence to be able to get them together out of the thing on it. So I would request that you put an article on it, put a warrant, that says that you have to, it's compulsory, that you have to meet with the school board four times a year.
I don't think we disagree. In fact, they've already begun to work this, this is separate, but they've begun to work out a new schedule.
We get told the same thing, the school board, that they are willing to work with. But that wasn't what I want. Because if you don't want who's on that board, and you don't know you've got a new superintendent, and you don't know if you're going to have the same people in here or the same people up there. So once you put it on, then it's a mandatory thing that they got to do. So I think you want to just get it written up and take care of it from here on out, the same way that they should be doing the same thing with the school, as far as that comes.
I think we're in agreement there.
Yeah, I'd meet monthly minimum right now with the school, or representative from the school.
You did in the last year.
I've met with the school probably at least, I don't know, maybe three times in the past, maybe, you know, six months or so.
But I think your point, Bruce, is, in the past, where this has been tried, the chemistry didn't sometimes work out. And I think to have, to have the community speak to the issue directly would be helpful. And I think you guys are working together fine. But I think still to have that come forward from the community would be fine.
I got one more. I, what you people have accepted, and I use, you are the tax people that accept it on power companies or whatever it is in New Hampshire. The, what you have affected, you're going to affect the taxes on every town up and down the Connecticut River. You're going to have Watford, Concon, Vermont, Unroll, all the way down to Lebanon, New Hampshire. Because what they will do is, these people would use the valuation that you people have accepted on that figures. And they're going to go back down, up and down the river, and those people are going to get hit with a highway, they already know it, I talked to a couple of towns. They know it, and they're concerned about it. This could happen the same way if it was down in Lebanon, and they had the same draw, it could come back to the town of Littleton. But Littleton is the slap on the hand, we are in a position where what we've accepted out of the thing on it is that created the problem that's going to affect everything up and down the river. That's number one. The next thing is, you should not be waiting anymore, I've already talked to the town manager. You need to have a separate meeting set up with all these towns. And you need to hire, and don't hire a guy out of Lancaster, you need to hire a separate person, because you're going in negotiations with a new company on it. And you need to be able to in turn have, this new company set up with all the towns, and start to have a meeting. And proportionally, you can have it done on the basis of the equalized evaluation as to what they pay from down the river or something like that, about hiring them. You need one, probably it would be in a term, out of the thing on it, or one company, but you don't need to be using the guy of Lancaster out of it, because that's what's got to send the possible problem out of the thing on it. But you need to initiate this thing by writing to these people, setting it up immediately, because they're going to have to negotiate with the new company that buys this thing out. And these companies, these people will not be taking over a corporation. I'll use the term, they, they have to have depreciation to make these things work. So when they got to have depreciation, negative, it's like the Donald Trump, he isn't paying taxes. There's no appreciation left on any of these things left, so we know they- There's no appreciation left on any of these things left, so you know they're gonna start from the top and they're gonna break it out of it from that path. So, consequently, this new company, and what you have, you need to have a real good negotiator. And the negotiator, he needs to represent all the towns on the basis of what it's gonna be allocated to. Because the purchase price of what they use doesn't cover the generators, doesn't cover the trucks or the other things that it's basically the equipment. And one of the things that established things up and down the river on it was the, in the town of Littleton, when they built the causeway, what we give, the causeway in turn was underwater as such on it. And then, uh, they went and convinced them to build a causeway. The state of New Hampshire paid the power company a million dollars for the land under the water. So, all that, the only thing that's not taxable was the original river that goes down through there on it. The rest of the land is taxable, and they can't come back and tell you that it's, because it's underwater, it's not valuable. They've established the value because of the fact that they tagged over a million dollars for that little strip of land over there. Uh, from that path, so all that water that's unmeted, it's taxable out of the thing on it from that path, other than the actual river bottom thing. And when you go to the original river, the ones on the left are all in Damont, um, that was Conville, Damont, and stuff like that on it, that original river. The ones on this side are all Littleton, Monroe, goes all the way down through in that path. So, you've got things of that nature that you can go in and negotiate with as far as that part are concerned. But you need to be initiating that right away about getting somebody to do it, so.
Okay, thank you. Anything else today? If not, we will move past-
We got two things left.
Oh, no, I've got three things left. So, we moved past public comments, we've got three board actions, I'll do them, happiest one first. Uh, need a motion to vag the meters between December nineteenth and January third, is that what Paul gives us?
Yep.
Yeah, sure. So, move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor indicate in the affirmative?
Aye.
Uh, closing the town offices for the full day of the twenty-third?
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor indicate in the affirmative? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last one is the school street parking restriction request as presented.
So, move?
Second.
All those in favor indicate in the affirmative?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Uh, there's a couple of board actions that we have in non-public, uh, we'll take, uh, entertain a motion to go into non-public.
So, move?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by roll call vote?
N S E, aye.
Square, squared, aye.
No pro, it's aye, we'll take a two-minute break. Thank you, thank you for coming and Merry Christmas everyone, Happy Hanukkah. Or Happy Fonzies.
Festivus.
There's no-
That's, that's the sign language.